It's up guys, clean up your language now.
I think I watched the last one yes.
Lori that texted me so. This is.
Uh Lori just got back from vacation, right? And part of her family ended at six, so she's gonna zoom in tonight.
That's fine.
Yep. That's okay.
Stuff happened.
Mm-hmm. They haven't passed what you think, what you were talking about yet, so.
Exactly.
I mean, the executive order is done, but we have to call them regardless, so.
We, we don't need a, we don't need a doctor's note tonight.
You know what, I'm just happy that she. I don't think the community is gonna argue.
Yeah, it's six o'clock, I'd like to call meeting to order. Christina, you have the rule?
Yes.
We'll dispense with the pleasantries unless there's an objection. Uh this evening, we need to move. Item A under new business. We're gonna put that up in front of uh. Old business.
Just so Terry can get.
Just so we can get things moving and people got things to do, but we need to, so with that change, can I get a motion to approve the tonight's agenda, please?
Um move me to approve tonight's agenda or as written?
Good enough.
That's fine, we're just moving him up. Not a big deal.
Okay, all, any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, most in period. Period.
I suppose you be the gentleman, my name is Terry Funsel, I am currently the president of Blackwood Fire Relief Association. Um here tonight to ask for bumping our service pension that we have annually per year. Little bit of background information. Um we're funded by the state, that's done through a task to all insurance companies, that's all insurance to homeowners and businesses in the state of Minnesota. Like in the states, Gold, Alt, Tal, and all of the relief associations within the state of Minnesota. And that money is for pension retirements for volunteer by the way. Our current nine hundred dollar per year pension has not been increased since oh seven was the last time that that had been addressed. Currently, I think in your paperwork. There are forms that we are required to fill out every year for the state. And that kind of gives you a guideline as to where you can be as far as how much you can. Have for your service pension for each fire department. So currently for block that fire departments, uh you can go as high as eight two hundred thirty-six dollars per member. The state does not recommend going even more than ninety percent of that number. So I mean, our term proposal would be to give it an initial three hundred dollar call the first year, which would be twenty twenty-three. Followed by two annual bumps and one fifty per year for the next two years. And then. Revisit everything after that. In two thousand eight. The stock market crashed and a lot of the investments that the fire relief associations have in the state of Minnesota. Tumbled. And. That required municipalities for all of the relief associations. To take the money to fully fund the department down in order not fully funded it or because of the migrant branch. Blackwood was one of them in the oh eight, oh nine period. It was kind of a perfect storm, there was a number of retirements right at that time when it was bumped. This time I don't foresee that, we only have too many videos I can retire right now. And we actually are. From a funding stand standpoint, seeing quite good. So at the end of the three-year period, we would only actually be at eighty-one percent. Of. Financing for active member. So. Not sound like we're serving them. So like I said, since oh eight, um there's a state statute that came down that required. All municipalities that govern the fire departments, the administration part of it, they're requiring that to, the council needs to approve and service pension of the increase. That's a required number, the obvious is to go out of it.
So essentially, um. What Terry is asking is that. The council provide me and him, the administrator drafting of a resolution approving the increase as he's present presented it. And I would even present it in the form of the three years.
Where?
Yep, so that that.
Over a three years.
Yep, so that satisfies the state auditor's requirement. And we don't have to do it.
Every.
Every single year.
Yep.
And that, um. Not the full support of the, of the city. And then that can get approved up to March sixth on someone in.
Bear in mind that for some odd reason, something were happening, we weren't fully funded, now that it comes back to the city, then it goes to the fire department budgets, it's all that goes down. And sold all through the city and then all of the townships. They're the responsibility. Sure.
Yeah, that, that makeup would be factored into that budget and then it's percentage out the way the formula is. Percentage out now.
Blackwood should be like eighteen percent.
Yep.
Minus twenty-six.
Correct.
Any questions? With the intent to reevaluate in twenty twenty-six.
That was correct. We've gained quite a bit on the service benefits in the last probably four or five years. We've got a lot of people joining the departments. Not stuck it out for that full twenty and then quit actually before they've even been partially invested at ten years. So we continue gaining financially because of that. It's not a good thing from the department's standpoint, but. From the pension side, we gain about.
How much, uh ten years are they personally vested? Sixty percent, sixty.
We're gonna be there at full twenty to be fully invested. And when this number is retroactive, it is already back to their first year of service.
That was my last question, actually, was this, they're gonna go back to. Yeah, like I said, we got two members right now that could actually retire and then let's uh. I believe the next one closes when you think years. I think for what you guys do is a twenty-year commitment. Yeah. And nothing's been done since two thousand seven. Definitely time.
It's time for long.
There are members that are currently retired, receiving this. Exactly.
No, they get paid, they get paid at the time they retire. So they can either have it paid out in the form of a check or can have it rolled over to retire.
So I mean, there's some people who have retired from the department.
They've already been picked out.
Okay.
So they wouldn't get any more is what you're asking, Ron?
Yes.
If this gets approved.
Oh, I see, so they're fixed at their current annual rate?
Yeah, it's only for active members.
It's a hundred percent payout at the end of those, right, one years?
Well, anybody that's retired can pay it out. For your. Don't be all in favor of putting it in the resolution form and getting it approved at the next meeting.
So I will draft that up. Do you feel the need for Terry to be here at the council meeting for that approval or can I represent?
Don't, that'd be fine. You, if you trust us to get it done.
Thanks, Terry.
Do a draft, Terry.
Thanks for your time.
Have a good night.
Old business.
My leg keeps spraining.
Public Works update. Facility update.
All I did was give you a TNT email that I got from uh Clay about where the contractor is at this point. Um what's up this year, if they have anything to add? Or Mike, at this point, we're getting close, maybe?
Getting there, um boots on the ground style, uh. Polar is, or they have started on uh painting the drains, the floor drains in there, that was part of the. The project details, so they've started on that. Greg's plumbing is currently waiting for the countertop to come in. That way they can drop the sink in and then they'll finish plumbing that and the bathrooms at the same time, I do believe. I'm guessing we must still be waiting on some door hardware, just handles and locks haven't gotten put in yet, so we're waiting on those. And I believe we're still waiting on those disconnects.
Yep.
Other than that. They're really close down there. Really close.
Yeah, and I thought Brent and Todd on that as well, uh the substantial completion date is slated for March tenth. Which means that we need to do a walkthrough next week to do the punch list. And as far as I know, that that is not scheduled to be done next week, and I think a lot of these things are on the list. Are either done or close to being done, like Mike said, so we're getting pretty darn close.
Well, I could sneak down there and take a look.
You have to even make that, or even basically? No, no, we've started moving some stuff uh to the storage area upstairs and that's it at this time, we're kinda waiting for. Everything to get wrapped up down there so we can make full control when you go out of.
Guys, we're just gonna get in everybody's way?
Well, not really, there's nobody down, there's been nobody down there for over a week now. Because everybody's waiting on something, yeah, everybody's waiting on something. So we're not so much in the way, but you know, for various different reasons, it's just to hold on until we're at a point of, okay, we know that there's. One or two small things to be done. But for now, there's just enough that, you know, moving everything down there would be in the way of some things.
So are there plans to come, for somebody to come back in the spring then to charge up the AC or that?
Yeah, I mean, it won't be fully released, you know, technically until that's done and that can't be, I think it's gotta be like seventy degrees for that.
No.
So it'll be, it'll be a while before their background to do that.
Installer or whatever.
TNT, I mean, that's through TNT, so.
They'll take care of it.
Yeah, that'll be part of the punch list, and that's not uncommon to see that, kind of like I understand. It just seems like these last few items, whatever, no matter, no matter what project we're working on, the last clean up things don't always go as fast as we'd like. So we just gotta keep on top of people and make sure we some.
So what about the, any dirt work outside right away this spring?
We'll have to do it better on there, you know, that, that whole site took way more than what was. You know.
Originally, and just.
Put on paper that it was gonna take, it took way more and it still is gonna need a bit more to really get it to where it needs to be. Whether it's immediately this spring, I mean, it's good enough to roll, you know, I probably wouldn't wanna do it immediately with frost coming out and everything, but it's so. Let it settle, let it firm up and then we can go from there, but yeah, we will have some more dirt to do.
Okay. And when was the, the punch list, when were we gonna be doing that?
Next week. Next week, next week. Yeah, I don't know if Brent doesn't need that. Get excited, that's next week.
Well, I have a curiosity question, what, what is the wrong side of a toilet, they have a flush valve on?
Basically on the tank is what it's some of the lake and for whatever reason it was. It was by the shower and it needed to be not by the shower, is pretty much what I understood of it, so.
I have my heater side of the pain.
It's just one of them deals that had to be, per, you know, per the plan, it had to be changed out to what the plan called for.
And that's something I.
Probably. One of them things.
Water tank or?
Yeah, it's not the high-pressure water. No, it's just your standard.
Uh any other questions? Me, downtown redevelopment.
Uh I have nothing new to report, but then following up with legal counsel, they're still working with fire arrest to get the federal lien off of um.
What's up?
The title commitment. Um I have been in contact with the real estate agents and the purchaser is patient. So. Um. I can move it at that.
Not in a hurry.
I, I wouldn't say that, they want clean titles, so they're going to allow us the time to do what needs to get done, get that off there. Cause once that property is developed, it'll be worth more than what the lien is and that can create an issue for that owner at a later date, and so it's important to an area that that get her vote.
Library?
I have nothing.
Lori? Anything from the library?
Yeah, I'm in one.
And you're. There, I hear you.
No. Ontario.
Do you have the slide, like, if you can get an audio or something?
I possibly don't.
You know, it's.
I don't know, it just depends sometimes.
You have yours on that?
She's not minded, she has nothing on her end.
Okay. Okay.
As long as she can hear us, that's okay.
Yeah. Our DMV.
So our office is open now to serve customers, um our first two days with our liaisons was um. Quite challenging, we had a lot of uh updates that needed to be done to both of our workstations with Windows STEM. Which created some firewall issues, which created mother issues in order to get their some part of our software, but the nice thing. But I can report is that we are open. Um I made a social media post at the end of last week and we served ten customers today. So it was an onslaught of learning very quickly, um but um we still have a lot of training to do. Um on a um ADA compliance standard. With our first visit, it's required for us to have some type of lower desk table if anybody needed to fill anything out. So um Adam at the lumberyard has ordered me a piece of counter and a dropdown table that I'll be able to mount to the. Front counter for ADA compliance. And then the other compliance issue is that the um entry to the back counter there where Mike is sitting, we have to have some type of um rope off. So people know they can't come back there for security reasons.
Yeah.
So I've ordered, um it's basically a retractable, like you would if you were at um like a baseball game. Where your ropes are, so you know where to go. That can go across that door, so when we're open for business. We have to have that closed so that the only people that are accessible to be back there are our staff and that's it. So that's just a compliance that state requires. Otherwise, everything in the office at the compliance, um the vault is um where we're keeping the majority of all of our um plates. And we have the locked cabinet behind the counter for all of our registered tabs. So it's open, um we are asking everybody to just be patient with us, as we've always stated in the past when we got the approval. And so far, everything's working good, um.
So people are excited.
Yeah, I mean, everybody that we've helped has been very patient and um very understanding. Uh haven't done a lot of title transfers yet, so that's really good. Um cause those are all different, but registering and renewing tabs is a fairly simple process. Unless there's a change to somebody's um. Like their, their address or whatever that unit is, we had one today on a dump truck for uh Henson Construction, so that one was challenging, we got through it. We're doing good. Last Wednesday. Yeah.
Are we, uh? Are, are campers underneath that?
Uh yes, because I was able to renew my fifth wheel. So anything that has wheels, that, that need the license.
I've got a title or it won't be transferred.
Then we will help you. We have had a long occasion, I have had a long conversation about uh the, the DNR portion of um of. The motor vehicle office in the last week as well, she sees a huge benefit. I see it too, but I would like to have one thing mastered a lot more before we step into that rabbit hole.
That, that's what I've been informing people, as I go, there's no ATVs.
We're not doing anything that DNR would renew. Right, so if you could spread that word, that would be helpful for us. I don't wanna let anybody down on that.
Play boat titles though.
No.
Oh, no.
Just.
Motor vehicle titles. Not boat titles, boat is still DNR. Trailer, but not boat. Yep.
Just clarifying it, I get a lot of questions down there, good.
Please, and, and, and we ask people to just call us. Um I know we put a media post, asked questions, even though I said we call city hall for questions, please call us. Because I don't, we don't have the time to respond to social media requests. Okay? We do. Yep, yep, everything that um was required of our office was already uh. Put into compliance the first meet we had with our main liaison in Grand Rapids, except for those two things that I mentioned.
And we also have DMV speeches. That was for a big short lines.
You know, and.
A couple minutes.
And we told a couple people that, you know, there, we had kind of an onslaught, you know, at lunchtime, it was a little busy and then we had some questions, so. Um the nice thing is that everybody's patient and they'll realize that it's not that too big of a weight.
And you don't have to drive. Our FEMA updates?
Um tomorrow, uh Mike will be working with a site inspector from FEMA, not the Minnesota side, but the national side. Um they want to do site inspections of everything that is not completed.
One second, guys, I, it's very distracting, sorry, thank you.
And um uh that's gonna be just on the. Everything on our damage inventory that hasn't been completed yet, that we didn't work on right away. Right after the disaster, so um they're required to do site inspections, take GPS locations, take measurements. Um even though the last four months I've been telling everybody, everything's suddenly four feet of snow, um. But I'm learning as I go, so uh that's tomorrow morning. And I think that's really all I have to report on that.
You must still FEMA.
You must still FEMA. Talked with some townships that are finally finishing their stuff out and they'll not. It, it was, it's been a difficult round for a lot of townships, so I'm not surprised that I'm struggling too.
So I've heard.
Yeah.
Any other questions for, well? Co-op?
Uh no updates. Since last meeting.
We are, what about option sales tax?
So a host file draft I just got from that list today, I attached to the agenda pre-review, pretty similar to last year, except updated numbers. I don't have the Senate file draft yet, but they have to be to the tax committee. chaired by the first of March. Um I did attend a hearing on the seventeenth with the tax committee. Um just kind of a quick, hey, this is our project again, this is what we're doing, answered any questions that they have. Um pretty similar to the uh hearings I did last year for the twenty-two option request. I don't know if we'll be called upon to do it again, um once they get the drafts, but um it's moving forward.
For the Senate?
For either one, yeah, this was, this, yeah, this was Senate, the Senate Tax Committee that I, that I was attending. So I don't know if the House is gonna have one or on.
Very good. Or, RFP?
So the RFP has been published, um and I have met with uh more engineering. Uh Carbaco, Freeburg and Grund. And I've also spoken with Bolton and Mink. Um there, I've got a scheduled meeting with them next week. Stan Tech, I think that's the one that you asked me about, did send me an email. No, and then Apex, that in Detroit Lakes have also reached out, so I don't know if we're gonna get submissions from them. Um. And then, of course, with Seth will um also be submitting as well, but that's what I've gotten to date.
Who were the first two, Christina?
More Engineering and Carbaco. And Freeburg and Grund, those three companies that actually, we've actually sat down and talked. I know for sure the three of them will be submitting. My anticipation is once the um due date is completed and the submissions are done, that there will be a review process of that. Which is kind of what I'd like to get some feedback on from the council is, um what I put in the proposal request is that. There would potentially be um a council presentation. And um a couple of these companies have asked me if that will happen. I told them that I haven't gotten to that point yet, but my anticipation would be that, um depending on the number of. Requests we get or submissions we get, that we narrow it down to either the top two or three and request that via council. Presentation. In order for on the involvement of the board to be there. Uh due date for all the applications, of course, I've got it, I'll tell April fifth, I've given them enough time to put together time or put together proposals. Only because I know that it's busy now too and, you know, and public works is gonna get moving, so. Any questions?
Anyone else? Won't you worry waving your hands at me frantically, so? You're old dog.
So I did make a submission to operation roundup. Um, I supplied you with the grant request. Um, with the budget that I got from Jensen. And that did get submitted to Bill Charming Electric. We can, about a week ago. Um, submissions aren't due until like the tenth of March, so probably won't know anything on that until mid-April, if any of that is approved. I did put a city contribution in that budget, though. Of five hundred dollars. So. I figured that was feasible without it being over the budget kind of thing. Um, just to get um Rob up here, so. That was not, that was not in the scope of the request.
That was a brush.
I can discuss it. It will probably increases time.
Were you too carried away with any of it? I think the chamber should be part of that discussion too. Personally. I don't know how much.
I can extend the request when he's here. You know, it might add a little bit more to his scope of service.
Or you could double it because it's two ducks.
I don't know, but it's only, I mean, he's already here and he's already making the travel. I understand Don's, since you're, you know, consideration.
I see, but.
But I think it would need to be two separate estimates, obviously, and not not two set, not one project. In my mind.
Well, you would want to that, to your. We definitely want to get the old.
Right. Right. Okay, I I can make him do know soon, John.
And everybody that goes up seventy-one, use that one.
Anything else?
So we anticipate this would be, he would be up here in the spring.
Uh, expectation right now is May. Yes. We haven't narrowed down the exact time yet. Correct, yes. Lots of time.
There be donations?
Uh, that's just a follow-up to the um authorization from the council meeting. I um managed to get two bicycles with two helmets for four forty-seven ninety-eight. Um, Northwoods was paid and uh uh Kelly from the bank picked them up, so um they say um uh donated from the pond. So hopefully their events is great this weekend.
Hope so as well. And you said the bikes are here?
Yep, yep. Yep. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure you guys saw how what was paid for because it was up to five hundred dollars.
Okay, new business. Item B.
Um, item B will be a resolution that I'm drafting to um start the process to sell seventy-two Railroad Avenue Southeast. Not trying to push Mike. I'm just trying to start the process so it's ready to go. So the same draft of the resolution as it sits is what I presented to the council from the other three options or the other three properties. Obviously, the library was one of them before that. Um, does anyone on the board wish to change or alter the language on this?
Need to go on public. Just need to go on uh up on public action or not action. So anybody can get on it, not just one sale.
That's public bid.
Public bid. And need to be put in paper. That's how it should be sold.
That's one way to do it.
That's how I should. But legally, you don't have to sell it.
That's why it should be done.
Not legally.
Oh, that's where it should.
Right, but legally, that doesn't have to be done that exactly. They can dissolve as a standard piece of property where you put a value on it and sell it. So.
Yes, I'm I'm hearing some language change requests. I need to have more.
No, I don't think it should be. I don't think it should be something that's put up for bids. I think you're gonna I think we lose out.
So I had a few conversations with um other realtors um other than um uh realty executives. Um, I think it would be in the best interest of the city that if the council is um fine with the language that we've been working with on these resolutions, that I can draft a letter to our I guess I would say our stakeholder, realtors, Eric, Tammy, Tisland, uh Andy Tina's, Max Barbie, all in my eyes, local realtors to provide them with a request to state what you they can do for us as um a realtor and then let the city pick it that way. That way we know all the realty um all the title commitment is done by someone that's um versed in that. Which I am not.
Those names you just mentioned connected with the company called Blacktop Realty?
That would be Andy Tina's. Yes, you are correct, Rob.
Want to make sure we do our local tax.
Correct. Um, and then uh going down that level. That would be due our due diligence.
Have you satisfied with that, Rob? Now, how do we determine the market rate to offer?
I've been leaving a lot of that conversation up to the realtor, knowing that they know what their commercial um uh market value is getting at the moment. Um, I've had some side conversations with our current realtor for the other properties about the range of what the property can get and it's, you know. Seventy-five to a hundred. So we don't have a current contract um to sell this property right now with anyone, so um can't move forward with anything until that's decided by the council.
I think that's a fair way to do it. Knowing that, you know. You never got to be, he gave us a break on the percentage, you know, to sell it or whatever.
Yep, I agree. Further questions? Well, for a market break.
Yeah.
Construction with one of the real.
I mean, I I'm not a real estate agent. That's why I've chosen to go down this this path at administrative level, just because that way, you know, a title company is getting involved.
Yeah.
I mean, just with Main Street.
With Main Street along.
I mean, that was, that was out of left field. I really thought title was clear when we took over. And um come to find out, it's still not, and that just, there's no legal reason why. Um. And then using a title company to help with the closing will cover both parties. You know. A lot better than, I mean, it's, I understand Don's Don's request, putting it on public bid might give us the best mo- amount of money for the pro- for the for the property itself. But then there's still all the rest of closing. It's not like a piece of equipment. As is, is not exactly you know, we can't, I I don't know. I just, I I worry about not. I think there will still be legal um involvement from our attorney in order to complete a transaction of real estate even on public bid. So I thought in better minds to put it towards somebody that is best versed in the process than myself.
Can still have a realtor work with it. Even though you can get price set with 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 a bid. You were still taking, you still have a it's still, it's still just like selling a property, but you have it, that way it's not just sold to the first guy that offers you twenty dollar, twenty thousand dollars for it. You know, it's it's open to everybody, not just the first guy you take the first bid from. You know. Gives everybody a chance to bid on it if they want to bid on it.
Everybody who?
Well, a- anybody that wants to bid on.
Well, so how are they gonna find out about it? How are they gonna find out about it?
Public notice.
Uh, in the paper.
Yeah.
In the black dot paper.
Well, or a magic paper. Most people, if you look at property, look online.
Right, so how are you gonna get that online if you do open up a bid? You just put it on what? Put it on what? What online bidding place? I'm just asking, like eBay? I I don't know.
No, I don't know.
Because when you blitz it with a realtor, it goes on M L S.
Yeah. You could post up on M L S.
You you could just do that.
The city of Black Dot can go on, what what page is this uh where you can sell stuff? You could sell up uh equipment or whatever, I guess. There's things all over where you, where everybody puts whatever.
Right, but what I'm saying is if we get a, we get a realtor, it's on M L S. You can get buyers that have a lot more.
Does the resolution need to have the uh realtor listed in it?
No. But if the city wanted it to be, they could. I mean, it's, the resolution is in there to leave the authority to make the best choice for the city. So what I'm hearing the feedback on is that the city would prefer it to be done a different way than what what's written here. I'm not pointing any fingers. I'm just saying in general, if that's not what the city wants, then I would do it differently.
This is the way it should, in my eyes, it should go.
I mean that.
Hire a realtor and have them sell a property for you. That's it makes sense.
Oscar, stop it.
Hey, we can hear you now.
Oh, no, you can hear me now, huh? Funny, okay. You can't see me? What the heck? It's weird.
I I know there's been a lot of conversation in the public about what this property is gonna get listed for. I've heard it myself. You asked me um because um Mr. Starby's been representing us, but the other two properties, people are asking him, and he doesn't have a current contract with the city for this parcel. So he and I have even had conversations about you know, somebody lets, somebody said, I'll give you a fifty thousand dollar cash for it right now. And he's like, I don't have the authority to say anything. But I don't think that looks what you've been, you're gonna end up paying for this property. It's gonna be more. So I I don't, if the concern for this, from the city standpoint about a process of either bidding versus real estate is to get the best amount of dollars for this parcel versus something else, I'd like that feedback.
To me, it's to get the most out of it, Christina. Get what we can.
And I think that's why we hire a real estate agent.
I'm sad is why you hire a real estate agent. Thank you.
Because if so, if if I was selling my home with one real estate agent and they got seven percent commission on my home, but somebody else got a buyer to buy it, they split that commission.
Yep.
I I would approve this resolution tonight if we could approve it tonight, but.
Well, I just want to make sure things are clear.
If it's.
And that's if there's, if there's issues, then they're worked out.
Okay.
And a conditional use permit. I'm assuming we are done with the resolution. Okay, moving forward.
Okay, so this will be on the March sixth um agenda for approval. Freeman Investment Properties has moved into the rental um uh business and their property on fifty-six First Street Southeast has been rented um as of November. So I've been working with the planning commission to uh provide a conditional use permit for the property for investment, Freeman Investment Properties. Um, the process that the planning commission agreed to work on uh in lieu of the existing ordinance is to send out a letter of which is drafted in your pocket to all the properties that are close to the existing property that's being requested of the permit. I have yet to hear any negative response to this letter. Um, I reported that to the planning commission this month. Um, unless I hear anything before March sixth, I'll ask for approval of this conditional use permit so it can 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 continue to be rented as a rental. Questions?
Is that the property next to the library?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
This was a residential rental.
It is. It is a residential rental in a commercial piece of property.
With no intention of that person opening a business in front of you.
That is correct.
Right.
Was it singular residential residence? Is there any ability based on this resolution for the owner to further subdivide it into multiple?
I would, I would say no to that question. I think that um piece is too small for that to happen. That is not the intention on the, I received from Freeman Investment Properties.
Yeah, and plus it's awkward. It's a steel, commercial steel building with minimal windows.
Right. Right. So no, there's, there's one, there's one person living in it right now.
Singular residential.
That is correct, Ron, yes.
Okay.
And a conditional use permit is uh kind of a temporary, right? Granting this owner.
Right.
Conditional use.
That's how I understand it too. Yeah. Okay, wherever to be sold.
Sold.
Yeah.
Could.
So you're saying that the conditional use permit will will go with the next purchaser of that property? Should there be another purchaser? Or will it end when that person sells?
It's it's always been my understanding. It's, it's always been my understanding that a variance follows the property, but a conditional use permit. Follows the owner.
Correct, but so I. I don't know, it might go with the use.
It could be, yes, the use of the property itself.
Yeah, we might wanna check on that.
I can get clarification in the report.
Okay.
Um, the Planning Commission reviewed it and they see that because even though it's a commercial property. Because of receiving. Rent, they see that as commercial use.
Right.
Seen as a debt of a business with open doors. So that's why they um are giving it it their approval. And letting the council approve it.
So the tax base is the same as if it's a commercial property for the owner, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
All right.
Yeah.
All right.
Any other questions?
No.
And now the transport for the parcels in Black Duck.
Okay, so the county sent us the request um to review a tax forfeited parcel. Inside the city on page three of the documents of an aerial GIS. Um map of the area, it appears to be. I don't know, Mike and I looked at it, that it could have been at some point a platted alley section.
Thank you.
It's very strange, um it's, it's, I mean, it's unusable, obviously, to as an alley.
It was kinda there before the town grew.
I think that way, right.
It was a doubled up alley over there. It's really odd, almost a a boulevard, so it it's strange, and there are two alleys and a greenery in the middle. Yeah, it's the high, the high rent district. It looks like the current alley is on the left side of the parcel, on the west, yes.
Yep. Um, after speaking with um. The department on of the county, if the city chose to um not put this up for. Um public, then. They're recommending, you know, just the city would purchase it at market value. And they kinda gave me a number quickly, that's why I provided you guys the pages of the um delinquent tax and forfeiture manual. Uh they quickly did an idea that would be like maybe three hundred dollars, the city plus filing fees. Or for the city to take possession of the property, and then it would just be. City-owned untaxable, which obviously we haven't gotten anything on it now, and then it would be in forfeiture.
It's an unbuildable lot.
It's totally an unbuildable lot.
Do anything with it, we've pretty much been taking care of it for the last couple of years, because nobody's been mowing it or doing anything with it. It's also a good spot that we can pile up some snow between that strange double alley there. It just makes sense for us to take it.
If if that's the way um the council's okay, I would have to uh follow the steps of the tax forfeiture manual and. Um.
You know, all two hundred and forty-five pages of that, that was.
I told you what pages to read. Um, I grabbed the correct resolution in order to uh um provide the the acquisition and purchase of the property. If the city is um gearing and not leveled, um I think the county needs an answer by. April seventh, um which would mean.
We're mowing it anyway, Mike.
Yeah, and like I said, it's a great spot for me to pile snow in there between those two alleys. We're mowing it, we're taking care of it.
Yeah, the council would have.
I personally would like to see us.
I don't wanna see somebody come in and buy it and try to.
Well, I don't know what they could do to it, but we have to take action in March sixth if we're going to, because the county needs. Response by April seventh, and our April meeting is on the tenth.
Okay, so then let's, do we know who previously owned it? Was it one of the adjacent property owners or who forfeited it?
Originally, it was owned by the house on the southeast corner of that block.
Oh, the rental house at the angle there?
Many, many years ago. Yeah.
Yeah, that's not the current.
It was strange the way that it was all laid out, again, that was the very edge of town essentially, and then they bumped town out a little bit further. They got quite, quite interesting around there, but from talking to people that have been around for many years. They originally, there was that southeast house there.
There's, I mean.
Or south west, south, yeah, south west. I believe so, I believe that was the name I had heard. And that, like Christina said, if the price tag is three hundred bucks, I mean, to me, it's, it's a no-brainer for us. It just kinda cleans things up a bit.
Yeah.
Okay.
I can't think of any issues that that would cause afterward.
Well, I I guess I can't either, I think. No. Overhead power right there, made it underground.
Somebody that actually, you know, the property joins them or something, then.
Now, yeah.
Why not just?
Buy a but a garden.
But I'd be done with it, yeah, but. I guess they could come to the city for that purpose too, in the future.
Well, that house directly south of it is up for sale currently. And that was built basically, you know.
In the.
Back then, it was fine to build, you know, right on like that, cuz it wasn't necessarily, the lines weren't quite like that when that was built.
Right.
You know, yeah, they they would be the only ones, you know, if a new owner came in and for some reason wanted it, but. I mean, nothing can be really be built on it.
No, and they're not for a lot size too, and twenty-five feet is the minimum, and that's. Pretty much what that lot is, is twenty-five.
Yeah, so I I would say that city should purchase it for Stephen. If somebody wants to do something with it in the future, they can come to the city to do it, doesn't really have any second goal, right? Cuz it looks like it's separated from the lot on the northeast side by a right of, right?
Yeah, there's, there's alley on each side, around the west and the east, there's street to the north. You know, i- it's its own little island right there, yeah.
It kinda is, you know. Yeah, it's pretty difficult for us to make right away in two separate areas.
Yeah, it's, it's a really strange spot.
Especially behind Newman's property where they've got all those trees, I mean, we, we actually don't have. A full alley down that road. Or in between both blocks.
No, that east alley does not go all the way. It looks like driveway, but it's actually alley, that's that city alley right there, yeah.
No, no.
No, you would think, just drive by, you'd think it was just their driveway, but it actually, it's alleyway for those two houses there.
It's, yeah.
So move forward with the, with the purchase portion of it.
Yeah.
That is quite right.
So.
And the last thing, I guess, is um I asked Rob to stick around just to. Do a small recap of our meeting prior to the work session, so that the rest of the council was. Aggressive, where we're gonna try to move forward on the police department.
Yeah, um perfect, um uh my name is Rob, I'm the interim uh chief of police of Black Duck. We had uh, we had a good conversation, we had a captain, uh the chief deputy and sheriff rigged up from the sheriff's office. Um to discuss some more collaboration with the sheriff's office as far as uh sharing personnel. Um kinda recap where we're at for the last year and a half-ish. Uh I've been interim chief, um we've been, we've spent considerable amount of time. Uh recruiting, uh bringing people up here to the department, um phone calls. Uh trying to find a replacement chief, um I can attest, I work at the university full-time. Um I can attest at the job market right now, very, very good for anybody who wants to do police work, um. We had a conversation with the sheriff's office about how uh position where they had for deputy, where they used to have scores of applicants. Uh now they're getting several, um and a lot of them are very, very new without any uh work experience. Um where that led us to is to start visiting the um possibility of having a part-time chief of police. That's also a full-time officer in a neighboring jurisdiction. Um one of the hurdles that uh that I have is a um interim chief when I'm not working full-time in law enforcement. Is this is staying completely abreast of what's going on in the area. Um it would be completely different role for, say, for example, a Beltrami county deputy that. Even though they're not wearing the Black Duck uniform forty hours a week, um they're still. They still know what's going on in the county, um they're still uh extremely proficient with the equipment. Um they're, they, they spend uh more time training, they spend time, more time actually uh practicing police work. Um so with that, wh- when, so when do you get a part-time police officer? You don't get a part-time police officer, you get a full-time police officer, you're just getting part-time. Or that person, and that that enables that part-time uh chief to potentially uh spend more time training. A new applicant, like for example, we um we, right now, we're, we're currently sitting, we don't have uh. Um we don't have good resources to train and um like say a random officer that has never had any experience. And where that causes problems is that really in an RV limited job market, that pretty much cuts that off of our applicant pool. Um so we're, we're, it's very hard to find an applicant that's gonna have all um all sorts of experience, that's willing to leave their agency. Um to go anywhere, so that's, and and it really doesn't matter, like a part, we could say, well, we don't pay enough, we. Um you know, people, we don't, we don't have a populated area, what, e- every department in the state is facing personnel. Um so, um I don't wanna go into any detail, but Christina, go into additional details about potential candidates and things we can discuss. And um a- add to that, but um I, does that summarize our conversation, or does it suit to a?
I wouldn't, I would agree with what you're saying, yeah, um personnel committee that after that meeting adjourned and. Um came to um kind of a, an idea of how to make this contract possibly work. Um and the sheriff's office is gonna collaborate with us on, you know, making that offer. We have a couple of people in mind from their um department and. I don't wanna go into details because none of that's been spoken of yet, so hopefully it will be the right. Answer to um not going to the next steps, which um were discussed in the um joint meeting about. What would happen if the department resolved. And uh and I don't think that that is a win for either agency.
Um, yeah, so I, and I think the part of the conversation with their current sheriff. Um and also, I think we're, everybody, there was an agreement that that is not a good option, that's it, that shouldn't be. On the table until, at least until we exhaust other options. Yeah, I um I think we'll kinda summarize that. Um the other thing is, it may sound obvious that the sheriff's office is willing to collaborate with the department or the ministry station, which they always are. They're always helpful, and they're gonna um continue to respond uh to what they can. Um in Black Duck, we share uh face a shortage, um what is a bit unique is not every department throughout the state. Allows their officers to work for other departments, um so by them willing to do that, it may seem obvious, but that's it, that's. Uh like a step that they don't have to take towards collaborating, helping themselves, so.
Yeah, I was gonna say, the willingness of Beltrami County, you know, that need to cooperate and help out. Was really, it was really pushed to the forefront.
Same, we've always maintained a very simple relationship as far as, you know, assisting with things out of the county. Um both myself and my uh our current full-time officer, both deputized as sheriff's deputies. Um so that's not the issue, if there's um, it's a statewide or countrywide. Um personnel shortage issue and uh some departments can um be down. Uh you know, of calling a staff uh for Black Duck having, being short one or two sworn officers. He's, you know, that that's a lot different than Minneapolis PD is down a couple of officers, or even Beltrami County Police Department. Somebody that has thirty, forty, fifty sworn officers, it's a lot different than when you have two or three. You know, and and really, we're just, you know, we're really one good candidate away from having a big difference of sheriff's department. Or on the police department here, but again, um the bigger departments are having trouble finding a long person. We're having a similar issue.
So the personnel committee is gonna move forward with um uh their plan and um. I may or may not have feedback for the council out of the March sixth um meeting. Might take a little bit longer than that, but um I guess what I can summarize is that, you know, we've, we've got. Um some action items that we're gonna work on, and we're gonna do our best to make sure that we're represented. Especially now that you're at work, you almost can't.
Yeah, and yeah, and just, um I still, for the past several years, I've been working towards becoming a law license attorney. Um so hopefully with, you know, a- at least hopefully by fall, that's where, that's where it's coming to, and I've. Um spoken with some other government entities, employee attorneys, and they're like, yeah, it's probably gonna be a conflict holding a peace officer license. Um uh in a jurisdiction where you're involved with um criminal defendants and one or the other, so. That's, but that, that's, that's coming, and I wanna make sure that, uh, you know, we've blacked out, do it, do it again while I'm here to help out, so.
I wanna thank you for doing that for us, actually, it's, it's important, it's really important for us to have this police department. My, my opinion.
Yeah, you know, it's, it is a fun role, and I I express that to, you know, friends that I'm trying to um, you know, recruit. It it really is, it's just like, oh, it, but it's a time interval with it, that it deserves, that I don't necessarily have to give, so that's. That's the kind of biggest issue, and everybody I talk to doesn't think that, you know, that. Because other departments are short, they're only, you see it short, they're probably working overtime already. Um and then they're trying to explain to the families that they think they should take on another part-time job, usually. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else this evening?
I got something quickly. Um, we had talked last year, uh briefly a little bit about the greater situation that we're in. Uh we had a a real good deal presented to us then, um we weren't able to act on that. Since then, uh you know, been looking a little bit, not a whole lot, but the county actually reached out to me the other day. They have a machine that they're trading in um roughly in September, October, their new machine should be here. They're willing to give that machine to us at what CAT will give them for trade, which is sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. That machine is a two thousand one Caterpillar one forty H. Got seventeen thousand dollars on it, the motor. Got seventeen thousand hours on it, the motor was rebuilt at ten thousand. It's got uh pretty fresh tires on it, and if you guys recall, the tires on our current. Um, setup down there are completely shot, and for those, it's gonna be roughly ten or eleven thousand dollars just for tires. That machine that we have. Uh, this machine comes with the mole board, obviously, and then it does have a front plow with it and a side wing. Again, it's county-owned, all maintenance records, all that stuff, it, like I said, it has the newer radial tires on it. But it's something I wanna talk to you guys about that we really, really seriously need to look at trying to find a way. To fund this. I've talked briefly with the county, trying to get creative to see if. They would, uh, you know, essentially float us, so to speak, and let us spam, you know, on a couple of year type of deal. They really don't wanna have to do that. Their thought is they would end up probably having to charge us some sort of interest, and it would just be a hassle, and I understand that. You know, they're already, they're already trying to look out for us here and, and give us a good deal on this machine, so. With that said, you know, I encourage you to look at the prices that these machines are going for. Um, just a quick Google search will show you, there's a two thousand two, same model and everything. Roughly the same hours, doesn't have a front plow, doesn't have the side wing set up. They're looking for eighty-five thousand out of that one right now. Same hours and the motor hasn't been rebuilt, and the tires won't look very good. So just to kinda give you an idea of price a little bit.
What year's the current grade?
Oh, I'd have to go back and look, it's seventy-something if I remember right. Late seventies, early eighties, no, no newer than that.
That's old nineties?
It's a John Deere. Oh, I believe it's a six seventy-eight, I don't quote me on that, but I, I think that's what it goes.
Think it replaced like a forty-nine or something.
Yeah, that one replaced one that was out in the fifties. Moving right up, yeah. Yeah, so this one would only be, you know, on the twenty years old side of things. But would be a, a, a huge step up, you know, we've battled with ours for the last few years here. Trying to keep it alive and going, and this is really, you know, our last big piece of equipment. That's a really hard one to give you on that, Max, the, there was one that went on auction not too terribly long ago here. That did have newer tires on it, not brand new, but it had newer tires, and I think that machine only went for like sixty, seven hundred dollars.
I think we bought that at like twenty-four, we sold the other one for. Ten, I wanna say, it was back in fifteen.
Yeah, it was something, something.
We took the money that we made off of it, so we only ended up paying like thirteen-nine for it at the end.
Yeah, and obviously it'd be the same thing, you know, whatever we could possibly get out of the one.
We took that out of the, the, uh, public ma- public works, um, reserve account back then.
I know I do have. An interested party in the one that we have, they own, uh. The exact same piece of machinery, and they wouldn't mind having another one essentially as. Backup and parts because that was our deal, parts are harder to find, it's. Nobody's got the stuff, you can't even find the stuff in Dunkar.
September or October?
Yeah.
One of those two.
That's, that was the closest date they could give me for when they're expecting delivery on their new machine.
So this is something you want council thinking on?
I, I would, I, I would like to get pretty serious about it, either, you know, we're gonna think about it. And try to do something, or not, I don't wanna waste my time or the county's time. You know, going to look at and testing out, you know, really trying to figure things out to end up not doing it.
I would have to do some deep diving and see what kind of funding I can find for it.
I'd be on board for that.
What do you think of, uh? How many hours, is there, how many hours are we using ours?
But this one, I always had so many hours on it, you can't even tell how many hours are on it anymore.
I mean, if, if there was like an average way to say, you know, this winter, obviously not near as much, but.
No, not, not near as much this winter as last winter.
They're helping us too.
Right now? I don't know, we use it out of.
It all depended on snow, obviously, in the winter time.
Pine Tree Park, and you use it at, you know, there's gravel roads through town.
We use it at Pine Tree Park, we use it, you know, we're all gravel in the southeast corner of town down here. Uh, we got gravel over in front and behind of Dollar General. Um, we also. Do some trading with the county, we end up doing the, uh, the Walden Edition up there.
Good.
We grade that in the summer cuz they grade, uh, the Beachley Road in the winter for us, since they're down there, it's just kind of a swap. Um, Pine Tree Park, the cemetery, um, the wastewater ponds, you know, the irrigation. The road through the irrigation field, there's quite a bit that we do with, actually. At one time, you know, we had kinda thought when we were trying to figure all this out, you know, at one time it was thrown around of. Possibly not having one anymore, and, you know, the more I've thought on that, the less I really like that. Just because of how much stuff we do shake with it. It is a nice piece of equipment, and it's needed for these roads, especially in the summertime, meaning you guys with the town and gravel roads and. Pretty quick. You know, we could contract with the county, you know, but. By the time you pay them every time that it needs to be done, you know, when we have our own piece of equipment. We can get out there every week, we can get out there after the storm, we can get out there when the frost boils dry. You know, if you're doing with the county, you're at their, their leisure essentially, and then, you know. Are we gonna wanna pay them every week to come and do it? The machine, you're paying the operator, you're paying everything.
Well, don't overextend your full pitch.
That's the quick one, right? Yeah, yeah, and we follow a lot of that.
So when will we need to know something about funding?
Personally, I'd like, I'd like to know as soon as possible. Now, the sooner that we can lock it in and, and truly make a deal with the county, the better. I, I would hate to push it to the last possible minute.
I won't have an answer for you in a week.
Come on, Christina, you can do that. Oh, that's, that's it, I just, I wanted to really know if it was something that, you know, the council would entertain or not.
I would entertain that.
I hear an entertain that, and I see two other nodding dads here at the table, so. Good, I guess we're entertaining, I appreciate it.
Don't start testing it, let me find.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Don't get into something you can't drive away from. He'll drive it away.
Oh, yeah, if we head north, it's where you're going.
From the beginning, so we've got it any further.
Oh, that's exactly why I wanted to.
I got like five minutes, please.
I, I can give you. We're gonna owe you the money.
Mine's gonna be much quicker and way cheaper. I am, I'm on making, not be here for this, the sixth, um, the meeting on the sixth. Um, our report came in for our, um, pull tabs. We were minus a dollar this time, I noticed that I sent Melissa and she said there was some concern about it, I think we've got that ironed out. Um, I also really wanna buy a keg box. And it's about thirteen hundred dollars, I got a quote for under a thousand, but that was in November.
Stop you right there, I got a box at home, I know a keg will fit in.
Well, this one's, this one's a little bit more special, um, it's basically a cooler with coil packs in it.
There was a catch.
It's got coil packs in it, so you can cool kegs.
Okay.
And then we can take it to, um, the park and to our catering things. And hook up kegs to them, and then they get cold. So, um.
It's an upgraded version of a keg reader.
Yeah, well, it's just, it's portable, thing is, it's light, the, um. Cooler that you can get online, cuz I looked into it, and I'm like, yeah, there's only three hundred and some dollars. But you don't have any hoses or any CO2 end connectors on it. Um, I got a quote from the guy that might tap service, he does all the cleaning of our taps down there. And he would get it together, get all the parts for it, and put it together for like a hundred bucks, he would also be responsible every time he came, he would come clean it. All the hoses and everything for that too. But I just, I, it'll be in, it'll be in the council packet and just. Um, if you have any other questions about that.
And you could use it with more than one keg at the same time?
Yes, the, the idea is to get a two-line keg. And, um, this is, this is in response to, we bring out catering stuff, um, I found that throwing two kegs in the back of my truck. Way easier than twenty-five cases of beer. And then what keg is, what keg is left over, the beer, then we can just throw it on to the taps in there and sell it. Rather than having cases of rolling around stuff.
In the can, so.
In the cooler. Um, yeah, cuz Mel last summer was.
Oh, boy.
What are you gonna do with those cans? I'm like, well, we're gonna sell them, but, you know, they're all, yeah, anyway, so.
Still got two minutes.
No, I'm good, I'm good, um, yeah, I'm gonna go to Vegas.
And I'll probably be here Monday anyway, too, so if there's any other questions that come up, I'll be able to, yeah.
With that, would someone wanna make them? There you go, second. We are adjourned, thank you.